Good evening. Our apologies for beginning a little late this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a combined regular agenda and business meeting of the Board of Education. Pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education, notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger in Cablevision of Elizabeth on June 20th, 2024. In addition, this notice is posted on a bulletin board in the lobby of 500 North Broad Street. And pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. We want to welcome everyone present here today at School 51 and our television viewers to this June 27th, 2024 Meeting of the Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and to make policy for the district. The superintendent manages this district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education permanent record. And in order for the recordings to adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from speaking. We ask that you silence the sound of electronic devices. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the Board. Participants for the public portion must sign in prior to the start of that portion. The signing sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and reason that the person wants to speak, whether it's an agenda item or general education comment. Again, we are pleased that you have taken this time this evening to join us here for our Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your interest in Elizabeth Public Schools. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa, Carvalho.
Here.
Chavez, Jacobs.
Present.
Moreno Ortega, Naron, Concalves Pastana.
President.
Rivera.
Here.
Bathles.
Here. If we could all just stand, please? If we can do a moment of silence for Alberta, Alberta Betty Thompson, retired secretary, secretary four from the superintendent's office, Jonathan L. Williams, Board Attorney for the Elizabeth Board of Education, Lisa Ann Rappa, guidance counselor from school number eight, Ernestine Williams, retired secretary two from school number one and school number 52, Raymond Magnus, Magnusson, retired administrative aide from the Mitchell Building, and Anthony Cruz, our 12th grade student from William of Halsey and Hill Press Academy. Thank you. At this time, if I can have Board Member Stephanie Pastana, Concalves Pastana, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can remain standing for the Star-Spangled Banner.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. Please remain standing. We can have Board Member Maria Carvalho lead us in the Pledge of Ethics, please?
As a member of the Elizabeth Public School professional learning community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to: Understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting. Speak in a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you. You may be seated. I just want to take a moment to say a few thank yous. As everyone knows, we've come to the end of the school year, and I just wanted to congratulate all of our students from the class of 2024. And on Monday and Tuesday, we were all at graduations from 8:30 in the morning until 7:00 or 8:00 p.m. And I just wanted to take a moment just to congratulate and thank a few people. So I just want to congratulate the class of 2024 from Halsey Health Academy, Halsey Health and Public Safety Academy. I want to congratulate our students from Thomas A. Edison Korean Technology Academy, our students from John E. Dwyer Technology Academy, our students from J. Christian Bowridge Finance Academy, our students from Elizabeth High School, Frank J. Sickerell Academy, our students from J. B.J. Stumm Academy, our students from El Cendro Hamilton Preparatory Academy, and our students from Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy. As I mentioned before, we had graduations all day on Monday and Tuesday, and it would not have been possible without the help of some key individuals. So I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge them, starting with Jason for his overall operations coordinator. Thank you for doing that. Thank you to Pete for the broadcast navigating videos. Thank you to Lewis, Joel, and Giovanni for the sound. Thank you for Justin, who was on the middle platform camera. I know that was very hard. Thank you for Mike R. for being in the press box camera. I want to thank Hedrick for being in the cherry picker camera. Thank you to Christian and Danny for being, doing the floor operations. I want to thank Eric, Mike G., and Ray for doing photography. I want to thank Tatiana Galago for being the coordinator of all the high school graduations. So thank you for that. I want to thank members from the Plant and Property Committee or Plant and Property Department, Orlando, Roger, Kiko, Nino, Lewis, and Manny for assisting with the weather, whether it was hot, cold, water. Thank you for doing that for us. I want to thank the Elizabeth Public, excuse me, the Elizabeth Police Officers and security guards for helping with the traffic in and out of the graduation and also helping with the turnover and bringing people in and out of the gym. Want to thank our custodians for cleaning the bleachers, the bathrooms, and the stage as we kind of did the turnovers for all eight graduations. I thank our superintendent, Ove Huglemeyer, our assistant superintendent, Jennifer Sedano, who also jumped in to be the emcee when we were missing. I'm an emcee for a little bit, but thank you for not missing a beat. Our assistant superintendent, Rafael Sedano. Thank you to our assistant superintendent, Judy Fritz Johnson. Thank you to our amazing Masters of Ceremony Vice President, Dan Naron. I just want to also thank our Master Sergeant Gerald Jr. and the entire Halsey junior ROTC students. They were only supposed to be at the Halsey graduation, but they ended up being at all of the graduations. So I wanted to take a moment to say thank you. I want to thank Eric and Omar for recording the Board Member graduation video. It was amazing, and I truly, truly appreciate you guys recording it. A huge thank you again to Jason for creating the overall graduation video. I love the video. I want to take a moment to thank the graduation commencement keynote speakers. Sandra Dubbin from Edison, Edwitch Nunes from Thwier, Todd Letcher from Bowridge Academy, Brian Sullivan from Hamilton, our Elizabeth City Council President, Carlos Torres, for JBJ, Sandra Trow for Jefferson, and Gerard Borish from Elizabeth JFC. Also want to thank our elected officials who came. Mayor Christian Bowridge attended seven of the eight graduations. I wanted to thank him for his continued support. Thanks Senator Joseph Cryan, Assemblywoman Annette Quijano, Union County Commissioner's Vice Chairwoman, Lourdes Leon, and Commissioner Sergio Granados for also attending. And Sergio was also a keynote speaker, so thank you for doing that as well. And our Elizabeth City Councilwoman at Large, Patricia Perkins Agusti. I just want to also thank the following individuals for attending: Board Secretary, Mr. Kennedy, Board Attorney, Heather Ford, our Chief Operations Officer, Frank Pusta, our comptroller, and our money guy, Rajiv Mahaltra. I want to also take a moment to thank all our investigators, our directors, our supervisors, our principals, vice principals, teachers, guidance counselors, social workers, and staff, if I forgot anybody, for attending and being in attendance. Thank you for supporting us. And finally, I want to take a moment to thank my fellow Board members for, one, for recording the graduation video. I know it was a lot, but I thank you all for doing that. I want to thank you for attending the eighth grade graduations and making yourself available even with the, you know, the half days. And thank you for attending the one, two, three, four, five, six, or seven, or all eight high school graduations. We couldn't have done it without everyone who was there in attendance, so the parents, the students. So I just want to thank everyone, just to take the moment. It was a team effort, and that was the reason why it was very successful. So again, thank you. All right. Next. On my agenda. So on June 16th, we celebrated Father's Day, and I wanted to take a moment to recognize all of the wonderful families, or excuse me, all the wonderful fathers in our school community and in our Elizabeth community. The men on the day is always think that I always favor the women. However, I wanted to make sure that they also felt recognized and they felt appreciated. So we recognized them a few weeks ago before Father's Day, but we wanted to do a special video in honor of Father's Day. So please look at the camera or look at the screen, and we will play our Father's Day tribute.
I think probably the greatest quality that a father or a father figure has is reliability. Someone who is willing to like set forth a plan to do whatever it takes to be able to support the people he loves.
A father, their role is being the protector, being a provider, potentially being involved in your children's lives. Being present means that attention is paid to them every second that you are with them.
I believe that empathy and understanding. A great father should show empathy and understanding for his children.
A source of love, patience, guidance, support, a role model, a teacher, and a person that is reliable.
Be there for your son, be there for your daughter. Whenever they want to talk to you, just have an open ear.
Definitely dependability, reliability, someone you can always count on.
Putting your children in front of you, they automatically become the number one.
To be loving, transparent, to be understanding of the person that they're looking after.
I think the quality is really based upon just being consistent and loving and stern, and also kind in the process.
Good father leads by example, just like a good administrator. He provides for his family.
Love and affection is the main quality.
Someone who's a provider, whether it's shelter, safe environment, or nutrition, you have to make sure the well-being of a child is taken care of.
Discipline, accountability, responsibility.
Talking to them today with today's problems, being there for them, accepting them for who they are.
The person that inspired me the most is my father. Just showed me every single day how much he loved me.
Definitely my father, I mean, someone that to this day continues to inspire me and drive me to always follow my dreams.
My father always supported me in sports, in education.
I've had multiple father figures in my life, and I've learned from them all, from their mistakes, you know, from their successes. They've always demanded respect, but they've also given respect.
My older brother, who took care of me, helped raise me, guided me, still continues to guide me and to teach me things.
My father, growing up, he led by example, at all times, good or bad. He's always present.
My father guided me to become a teacher and then eventually become an administrator. He pushed hard. Due to that, I think I had a very successful life and career. And I thank him. Even though he's not here with us anymore, I thank you, Dad, for your guidance and love.
I remember growing up, my father always wanted for me just to have a better life than he had.
My father, he taught me to be humble, work hard.
Looking at my father and getting up in the morning and going to work every day. You have to go out there. You have to do what's best for your family, and that's what my father did to me, and that's why I do my best to do it for my kids as well.
One of my uncles was someone who was very disciplined, knew exactly what he wanted, and actually worked really hard. So he took the time to really be part of my life and mentor me.
It was my father who always taught me to work hard, to respect. He taught me the meaning of love and love for the family.
I didn't necessarily 100% appreciate my father and what he did until I became a father myself.
My father taught me responsibility. There are consequences to all of your actions. Be proud of what you represent and accept everything that you do.
My own father left Cuba. From there, he set forth a plan for his new adopted country and what he was going to do. Over that time, he was able to make a lot of contributions and build a great family and do a lot for his community.
In honor of celebrating fathers and father figures alike during the month of June, Elizabeth Public Schools would like to thank and recognize the wonderful fathers, uncles, godfathers, mentors, and father figures here in our school community, in the greater Elizabeth community, and everywhere. Thank you for the role and responsibilities you take on in teaching and developing and raising children to become our next generation of leaders. Thank you.
So surprise. So yes, we just wanted to just recognize all the men in the district and say you're appreciated. Okay, continue. I mean, would anybody like to say something? You good?
Yeah, Madam President.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you personally for, you know, being one of the agenda minority members on this board, right, that we have some equality and that we're seeing that with men. And our fathers are important, and you're recognizing that role as Madam President, and I truly do appreciate you bringing that balance back to the Board. Thank you.
Madam President, you won't be hearing from Commissioner Jacobs anymore. Thank you for that beautiful tribute. That was a- That was quite a surprise, and I really love how it showed our, the men in our district the type of importance it is for fathers in the household. Because, you know, oftentimes we just get the tie. So, you know, it was nice to see, or the socks, you know, but it was, it was nice to see. So thank you. Thank you for that awesome tribute.
Thank you. I'm having an issue with the sound. I'm going to, this is a test. I don't know if these are too close to each other. I don't know. I don't, okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you. At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who signed in prior to the session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the signing sheet. Each statement made by our participants shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total of the public comments shall be limited to the 60 seconds, 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question the board members individually. Each speaker shall comply with all respects to the board policy 9322. Copies will provide.
Yeah, it's a lot of feedback.
The following rules shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals or naming of individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Comments will not be debated. Any person in violation will be warned. As a reminder, this meeting is a meeting in the board of pub, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, I call Ms. Maria Lorenz. You have some copies of something that needs to be passed out? What is that? What is that? Oh my God.
Is it on? Okay. So I also have a few people that I would like to thank, myself, Madam President. And my son graduated eighth grade very proudly this past week. And I also have a list of people that I would like to thank, that I think it's important for this board to recognize these teachers for all the help that they do. Mr. Kaufman has been absolutely instrumental at School 29 for my child. Mr. Reguino, Ms. Rivera, Ms. Bundy, Mr. Rodriguez, and Mr. Maxwell have been teachers that have left such a great impression on my son. And also, and I know I'm going to butcher her name, and I do apologize, is the science teacher at School 29, Ms. Yan Gauzki. I tried to pronounce it as best as I could. These are all teachers that have touched my son. He appreciates all of the help through all the trials that he's had throughout his life and his health condition and have been attentive, have been supportive. And I don't always come here to talk about all the bad things, but I want you to understand that these teachers were absolutely the best teachers he's ever had, and I know what that feels like. At graduation, my son made top 10 of his class. My son also made the National Junior Honor Society. These are two huge accomplishments for a child that has an IEP and had struggles, still continues to have them. But I was very disappointed and very shocked when at graduation he wore his cords, and at the end, they took them away. That's congratulating him on one end and being an Indian giver in the other. The cords, his accomplishments, what he wore around his neck was collected to be recycled for the next eighth grade class that comes into school number 29. I find this insulting. I find it appalling that the district, with all the positions that you create for your friends and give them six figures, would turn around and couldn't afford a dollar cord for these children to keep and acknowledge, acknowledge their efforts. I bought my son his cords back. I have to say, that is the most ghetto thing I've ever seen in my life. I bought my son his cords, and I also took the liberty of buying extra cords for this board. So because you're so hard up on it, right? You need them. You need that extra $1, because you need them to create positions for your friends and your family members, positions that we don't need that we could have saved, services that could have been given to special needs kids that they're not getting. It's disappointing. It's an embarrassment. You should be ashamed.
Thank you, Ms. Lorenz. At this time, we're going to have Ashley Macbeth come to the mic.
Dear superintendents, superintendent and board education commissioners, my name is Ashley Macbeth, and I'm writing to you to plead a case for our music and arts teachers. There is extraordinarily strong need for a music and art room in Jerome Dunn Academy, School Number Nine. As a parent, PTO president, and now a new ESS substitute, I have witnessed firsthand how dedicated and hardworking the arts staff in this arts academy work. They continue to go above me eye, and even though their space is getting taken away and more limited each year. The music and arts teams are creating a wonderful performances and showcase for students to participate in. However, it is becoming increasingly difficult as they no longer have any rooms or space. In the 2003-2004 school year, there were over 850 students that attended at School Nine, and these teachers must either run from class to class and building to building every single period, or share an auditorium and/or cafeteria with two to three other students, teachers in order to teach music and arts to their students. Since the auditorium is a shared space between two schools, every time there is an event or assemblies, these teachers are kicked out of the auditorium. The cafeteria is used half of the day for lunches. This has resulted to teaching in the hallways at times since there are no rooms for them to teach in. Since there, since there is a third building that will be a part of School Nine, I beg that you consider giving back the music and art rooms that existed in this school before, so these teachers in the arts academy can grow to their programs and shine. It is always said that it's about the children, so let's make the children a priority again. The children that thrive in the arts serve a place to do it, not a hallway, not an overpacked cafeteria, and not kicked out of an auditorium. The arts and teacher, arts and music teachers are and can nurture the next singer, artist, instrumentalist, and actor or actress. How can this school be labeled the art, School of Arts when we have no room to cater to it? I leave with you a petition. I have started over 150 signatures and counting from individuals residing in 20 states in the United States of America. I also leave pictures of the small space shared by two music teachers and two arts teacher. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I am the public participant portion. At this time, we're going to be reviewing the agenda.
Madam President.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, so the only changes to the agenda were the two amendments that you sent us Tuesday? And what was on the table?
All right. Any questions or comments regarding Tab 1A? Official and private minutes of May 2nd, May 9th, May 29th, 2024, and June 17th? Seeing no comments or questions, Mr. Kennedy, please add it to the agenda. Any questions or comments in regards to Tab 2A or 2B personnel reports? And if there are any, if there are many questions, I'm open to...
I just have one question. Is this part up, the updated version, this page? Okay.
Yeah. If there are many questions about, hold on. If there are many questions in regards to Tab 2A and 2B, we can bring it to private session. Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
I make a motion?
Second?
I second that motion.
Mr. Kennedy, it's been moved and probably seconded to the table, Tab 2A and 2B, for private discussion, please.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Neera. Carvaz-Pastana.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Bafflers.
Yes, thank you. Tab 3, tuitions report. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, add it to the agenda, please. Tab 4A, superintendent's report.
Madam President, I'm going to ask our Director of Bilingual ESL and Education, Dr. Sandra Nunes, to please present under considerations.
Good evening, everyone. So here in this consideration, it was for our bilingual social worker to, who attended a workshop on holistic approach to understand and support the well-being of our students. So we always encourage our team members to pursue different professional developments, and this is a case.
You're right. You're right. Thank you, Dr. Nunes.
Thank you. So we're going to do, sorry, directors, we're going to do the same thing we did last one. So if the board members have any questions, they'll ask you questions. If they don't, we'll just move on. Okay? So thank you for that report. Any questions from the board members from Tab 4A for considerations? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, add it to the agenda. Any questions for Tab 4B, superintendent's report, use of facilities? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, add it to the agenda. Any questions or comments regarding Tab 4BB for the use of facilities considerations? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, add it to the agenda. Any questions for Tab 4C, field trips? And I know board members want to know how many field trips there were total. So someone could say that, I don't know. You know, total. Yes.
Total for the year, we are, we've completed 743 field trips.
For the year?
For the year, from July 2023 to today.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding Tab 4C, field trips? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, add it to the agenda. At this time, I'm going to have the superintendent give Tab 4D, the harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigation report.
Thank you, Madam President. Pursuant to Board Policy 5131.1, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and New Jersey Statute 18A:37, the results of each investigation shall be reported to the Board of Education no later than the date of the next board meeting following completion of the investigation, and include any services provided, training established, discipline imposed, or other action taken or recommended by the chief school administrator. Since our last Board of Education meeting on May 9th and through June 17th, our school counselor, school-based social workers, and supervisor of anti-bullying have completed 76 HIB investigations. Of these investigations, 30 cases were founded for HIB as per New Jersey law. There were 35 males, 57 females, 81 regular education students, 11 special education students that were the alleged victims. There were 95 males, 37 females, 108 regular education students, 21 special education students, and three non-students that were the alleged offenders. Of the 30 cases founded for HIB, five cases were founded based on race and national origin. Four cases were founded based on color. One case was founded based on religion. One case was founded based on sexual orientation. Two cases were founded based on gender. One case was founded based on gender identity and expression. One case was founded based on mental, physical, or sensory disability. And 27 cases were founded based on other identifying characteristics. Of the services provided and actions taken for these investigations, there were 31 skill development lessons and trainings, 69 counseling sessions, five targeted behavior interventions, 17 referrals for outpatient mental health treatment, eight changes of classroom, three changes of school placement, 16 administrative counseling sessions, 21 in-school detentions, 51 parent conferences, seven referrals to outside agencies, two professional development trainings, 28 out-of-school suspensions, and 13 are continuing to be monitored. The HIB statutes further requires that at the next regularly scheduled meeting, after board members receive the initial report of HIB investigations, that the board issue a decision in writing to affirm, reject, or modify the superintendent's decision pertaining to the 28 cases that were reported to you at the last board meeting on May 9th. In order for you to do so, the investigative summaries for those investigations which were reported to you at the last board meeting have been provided to you prior to voting. In addition, I also have the public hearing. Welcome to the public hearing on harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and our student safety data system reporting for the period starting July 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023. In July 2011, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights was signed into law as Public Law 2010, Chapter 122. In accordance with this law, all New Jersey public school districts must designate the full week, the first, excuse me, the first full week of October of each year as Week of Respect. During the Week of Respect, school districts are expected to organize activities, including but not limited to age-appropriate instruction and opportunities for student discussion on conflict resolution, issues of diversity, and tolerance. A resolution was put before the board in September declaring the Week of October 2nd through the 6th, 2023, Week of Respect. Each of our schools planned appropriate activities for this week. In fulfilling the reporting requirements pursuant to the New Jersey Administrative Code 18A:17 through 46, two times each year between September 1st and December 31st and between January 1st and June 30th, the school board shall hold a public hearing at which the school chief school administrator will report to the Board of Education and the public any acts of violence, vandalism, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying which occurred during the previous reporting period. From September 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023, there were 156 HIB investigations conducted by appropriate school staff. Of those cases investigated, 67 were confirmed cases of HIB. The following anti-bullying specialist, anti-bullying specialist alternates, and the anti-bullying coordinator conducted these investigations. And these include Katherine Calderon, Dani Ayamola, Nafisa Freeman, Dinora Mejia, Michelle Zuber, Andrea Juca, Maureen Cray, Yasenia Torres, Shanice Hurst, Tyler Lamans, Megan Courtney, Kalina Johnson, Lisa Raba, Sofia Verma, Naima Rodriguez, Eric Stanley, Judith Lantigua, Yomaira Carrero Iglesias, Cindy Goncalves, Daniel Kangoo, Tanya Santucci, Shira Bustamante, Kathy Amato, Cindy Lichtenstein, Melvin Luciano, Maria Cabrera, Antonio Sapiro, Nagwa Elsarma, Sarah Brown, Kathy Santos, Jennifer Hernandez, Carly Montero, Kenyatta Jackson, Chantel Hernandez, Colleen Reynolds, Jason Colco, Lourdes Soto, Anna Race, Christine Flaherty, Kerry O'Connor, Laura Bellevue, Jada Nicholson, Imani Lures, Edson Martinez, Lisa Boginsky-Matlos, Ishmael Medley, Jessica Sepulveda, Judith Valdez, Felice Fabiano, Jessica Sofrango, Valerie Hendon, Wendy Maravi, Christine Raba, Guadalupe Ferreiro, Lauren Delgado, Daniela Grineco, Yasmin Maher, Desan Brown, and Peter Vosler. Of the founded cases for HIB, there were four incidents based on race and national origin, one based on color. 1 based on color, 4 incidents based on sexual orientation, 1 incident based on religion, and 1 based on ancestry. 9 incidents were based on gender, 2 incidents based on gender identity or expression, 1 incident based on mental, physical, sensory disability, and 54 incidents were based on other targeted bases. Of the founded incidents, 37 were verbal, 13 were physical, and 17 incidents involved electronic communication. For all HIB investigations, there were 52 out-of-school suspensions, 19 in-school detentions, 19 classroom changes, 10 changes of school placement, 11 administrative counseling sessions, and then, of course, additional services such as counseling school development, classroom lessons, behavior interventions, referrals to outside mental health facilities, referrals to outside agencies, and parent conferences were offered to all students involved. Between September 1st, 2023, and December 31st, the district provided appropriate in-person and virtual HIB training to school counselors and social workers and new staff. And in addition, district-certified staff received a 2-hour mandatory virtual HIB training, which is required every 5 years. The district also provided extensive in-person and virtual specified training to the anti-bullying coordinator and to all anti-bullying specialists and their alternates. Non-certificated staff also received training, and new school-level administrators and new HIB staff received virtual in-person training in the HIPster Reporting System. From September 1st through December 31st, there were 137 substance abuse incidents district-wide. There were 273 incidents of violence, 36 of vandalism, 17 weapons incidents, and 262 other incidents leading to removal, which are broken down amongst our 37 schools. And that concludes the public hearing. The PowerPoint presentation will be made available on our website as early as tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Tab 5, Authorizations Report. Any comments or questions regarding Tab 5? Yes.
Madam President, I have one question.
Yeah.
Tab 5, on page 8. Authorization to Increase 2024/2025 Meal Prices. Could we-
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. I'm having issues hearing. I don't know if we need to turn this air off or what, but I cannot hear board members as they're speaking. I don't recall this being on before. What was the sound?
Page 8.
We're going to try. So board members, just speak closer to the microphone, we're going to try.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I just wanted a little bit more clarity on page 8. Authorization to Increase 2024/2025 Meal Prices. We can understand a little bit more of the rationale behind it?
I can answer that. So unbelievably to me, where we had a corrective action plan to spend our cash, there's a USDA and state in New Jersey requirement that says the weighted, if our weighted average of what we charge for our meals is less than $3.85, we have to make an adjustment in the prices. And there's a formula that you have to apply to your current price. So our weighted average was $3.18. And what they tell you you have to do is increase that $3.18 by first 2%, which is, well, it's just a 2% rate increase. And then you have to mark that number up by the Consumer Price Index, which is 8.27%. So that gets you to, those 2 percentages are what they say we're required to do. So that brings us to a weighted average that we have to meet of $3.51. So then you go through this whole worksheet of how you adjust the prices. So the prices you're seeing there is an increase from $3.3 to $3.30 for pre-K to 8, and $3.60 to $4 for the high schools. It's a little confusing to me, but that's the requirement. And then if we don't do this, what they do is then they take away the reimbursement that they give you for your free and reduced meals every day.
Can you repeat that again? If we don't do it, they'll take away what reimbursement? I didn't understand.
Every free and reduced-priced meal that we serve, we get a certain rate for each of those meals from the USDA and from the state. So they're saying if you don't comply by increasing the paid rate in accordance with the formula that I just described, that they'll come back and take away reimbursement on free and reduced meals. I'm not so bold as to say, I'm going to just flaunt what they're telling us to say, but it's very confusing to me with, as you know, our corrective action plan. Our only comment was that we had too much cash, and we had to spend that cash. So that's what you're seeing in front of you is that required adjustment in the school prices. I can send everybody the documentation that shows why we have to do it and what the calculation is.
Thank you.
Madam President, Mr. Kennedy, if I may, would you also be able to tell us how many children this affects? What the breakdown is? Because there's children who don't pay, then there's another middle ground, right? There's 3, 3-
Yeah, 3 tiers.
3 tiers.
3 kids.
So how does it affect the middle tier?
Yeah, they would have to, they would have to play a pro-rata share under their reduced-price payment that they make every day.
Is this something that will affect us if we don't vote on it today?
No, it won't, it won't affect us.
Madam President, I make a motion to table this so that we can have more-
Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved and probably seconded to table the item regarding the authorization to increase the 2024/2025 meals prices. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Jacobs. Nera.
Yes.
Concalves-Pastana.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Bathles.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, I need a 5-minute recess to fix the sound, please.
Before we fix the sound, I just want to say thank you for support in this because it was baffling to me.
Will we bring this into a committee? Mr. Kennedy?
We could bring it to finance.
Never mind, we're not having a 5-minute break, sorry. It's an issue outside. My apologies.
Narrow it down.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions regarding Tab 5? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, can you please add it to the agenda minus the item that was tabled? Any questions or comments on Tab 5A? The Revised Calendar for the 2024/2025 School Year?
Can we?
I just want to make sure. Mr. Kennedy, I just want to make sure the items that we had discussed were changed on this?
Yes.
Yeah, I see, okay.
The 2 Professional Development Days were moved from Monday- The 2 Professional Development Days were moved from Monday to Friday. The 3rd one was maintained on Monday since it is training on state testing. So the changes were made.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
We're still starting on first aid of administrative students. Okay, it's still Friday to the 6th, okay. Thank you. Any questions for Tab 5A? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add it to the agenda. Any questions for Tab 6, Finance and Accounting Report?
Madam President, I have one question.
Yes. Board Member Rivera.
On 6, on item 20, I was just wondering, does the board, or maybe the superintendent may know, does the board have a policy to reimburse employees if, for example, other personal items, like a glasses or a watch or something? Do we have a policy on that or no?
No specific policy. They come to my office and tell us the story. We try to ask for proof of what they say they should be reimbursed. Do they have insurance? I think in that case on the phone, was it through, did they get the phone through the, a carrier? And in this case, it must have been about 6 or 7 visits to central office. And it just seemed reasonable to reimburse this person for-
Can you repeat that? The reason why you reimburse the person because of what?
Some, a kid took her phone and threw it and broke it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And then they had to go out and replace the phone. So we got proof of what they paid for it, and we got proof that the old phone couldn't be repaired, and that they didn't have, well, they said that they didn't have insurance on the phone through their carrier, or that they weren't leasing the phone from the carrier. So after many, many meetings, finally it ended up with the superintendent, and we decided that they had pleaded their case and reimbursed them for the phone.
Oh, thank you. Any other questions for Tab 6? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, add it to the agenda, please. Any questions for Tab 6A, Transfer Funds? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, add it to the agenda. Any questions for Tab 7, Awards of Contract Report?
Madam President?
Yes, Board Member Jacobs.
I have a question for Tab 7, page-
Can you speak closer to the microphone, please?
I have a question for Tab 7, page 13.
Thank you. Page 13.
The Delage Land and Financial Services Director, Marcal.
Yes, sir.
What is that for?
That is for the license for the security for the Cisco equipment for 5 years.
For the security of what?
For the security, cybersecurity for the Cisco systems. It's, there is a security intelligence. So it actually can determine if changes are happening that are not, that are anomalies so that, so that it could alert us.
Are you saying that's related to cyber attacks?
Yes, sir.
Is this, this is what our-
It's a renewal.
So we, so we started this contract last year?
We start in July 1st.
We're starting it this year?
Yeah, but we had it for 5 years already. We're renewing it.
Okay, thank you. My next question is page 17.
What page? I'm sorry.
Page 17.
Thank you.
The first item with Hudson County Motors, Mr. Malanas. So is this, because I thought this appeared on the agenda previously for the electric box truck. So what is this for?
This is what I understand, okay? We have 2 vehicles that we're buying from- Sorry. We're buying 2 different vehicles from Paro de Grant for the electric vehicles, and this is the second vehicle.
I thought the, when the initial request came, it was for 2 vehicles that we approved.
There was, there was the box trucks and the buses, 2 school buses.
So now are we getting a grant for this?
Yes.
Do we get the money yet?
That's an old grant that we had for quite a while. Yeah, we had, I think it's the 4th or 5th year that we had this grant. Because remember, it takes about 3 years to get the buses manufactured. And because of COVID, it took even longer. So we've been waiting for these vehicles for almost 3 years now.
So how many electric box trucks now will we have?
We will have 2, and we will have 2 electrical buses.
And when are we expecting this to receive delivery?
We're hoping that we get it by the end of the year, but they've been saying that to us now for about a year.
Have we received the other one?
We haven't. We received the other ones that we bought that are not electric. We bought 2 other box trucks that they are not electric.
No, I'm talking about the, so we haven't, when did we approve the other ones? That was what, 3 months ago or 2 months ago?
Way, way back, yes.
And so we're still waiting to receive those?
No, those we got.
The electric ones? No, the electric ones.
Not the electric ones.
Yeah, no, the electric ones.
Correct. No, electric, the electric ones we have not received at all.
Thank you. My next question is page 19. The last item for Mr. Malanas again, the Brightly Software. What is this for?
Brightly Software, that's our work order system. That's-
School dude. That's school dude?
Yeah, so we're doing like an upgrade to the system. We're cleaning up a lot of the, you know, the old stuff that we have in there. So we needed them to do a software upgrade.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions for this tab?
I have a quick question for Mr. Malanas, actually for Mr. Malanas and for Michael also. Are we prepared for these charging stations? No, you take it, no, you take it.
I'll take this one. For the charging stations, no. We're still waiting, I believe we're waiting for an upgrade of the power for the bus yard.
For your bus yard, for the, I'm sorry. For the warehouse is done. We already did the power upgrade at the warehouse. Now what we're waiting for is to do the one in the bus yard. We need to add an actual transformer in there and upgrade the service because what we have in there is not capable of handling that.
Madam President, I'm going to ask if we can bring this to Plant and Property Committee so that with also our Director of Transportation, so that we can have, so that we can have a conversation about these charging stations and maybe even collaborate with the city and the county because we have been installing them. And maybe we, you know, I think with, what is it? The chicken before the egg, we're getting the buses, and we're not going to be able to charge them. So let's, maybe we have a bigger conversation before September.
The only, the only thing I'm going to mention is that I know that's part of the grant. We, they actually are installing the charging stations. So I know contractually, that's what was agreed with the grant, that they were going to install, you know, the 2 at the warehouse and the ones at the bus yard.
Great, thank you.
So Board Member Carvalho, do you still want to table it?
No, no, I don't want to table it. I'd like to bring it to the next, okay, Plant and Property meeting.
Well, Madam Chair of Plant and Property, add it to your agenda, please. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Tab 7?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Board Member Barbosa.
I'm going to start on page 7 of the tab. Do we know, have, we worked with the Nardone Brothers Baking for the pizza products? Are we changing that, or is it the same? I'm not sure who I should address.
Jamie's not here.
Or maybe, yeah, just get back if we're changing our-
You said page 7, which one?
Page 7, the last contract?
Yeah. The Brothers Baking Company?
It's our pizza product, sorry, just was-
Page 7 of 7, Tab 7. Give us a minute.
And maybe you could just, I would love to know if we're changing or we're keeping the same company for, especially our pizza. I feel like our kids, they always talk about the pizza day, Friday. So I want to know about the pizza. So then I'll just, you can get back to me on that.
Well, it's a result of a bid, and there was, there was 1 bidder, and Nardone won.
So is this the first time that we're using Nardone, or have we used them in the past?
That's the question I can't answer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, then if you could get back to me, Mr. Kennedy. Then I'm going to keep going just on page, on page 14. Mr. Marcal, if you can help me understand, the contract with the, page 14, the first contract with Power School? So is Power, I know our Power School, but do they, they don't do our robocalls, right? Do we do our robocalls?
No, Blackboard sold the business. Blackboard was the vendor that we used. They sold the business, so Power School bought a company called School Messenger that does the robocall, but it's now integrated into Power School. So we don't need to go to a different software to make the calls.
Make them through Power School?
Through Power Schools.
Okay, thank you. And then last- And then last, just going to bring it to, finish it up with Dr. Ojeda, please. Dr. Ojeda, we always use our services page, I'm sorry, page. Page 27, last contract with Children's Specialized Hospital. We always contract with them for occupational MPT or is that a change? Just project, project.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. That was set out of bid and there are different.
Understands. Okay. Thank you. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Technology Department, I gave you guys great acknowledgement for graduation. I don't know what's going on. I love you guys, but I don't know what's going on tonight.
Madam President? Page 19, Open Systems. Mr. Malanis, can you explain what the On Guard? On Guard? Central Station Remote Monitoring and Licensing. It's, I know it's a renewal, but I've never seen the On Guard as made, is that a new system? A new program?
No, On Guard is actually the software that is used to run the whole system. All the car access, the camera systems are different, but the access mainly. So it's the operating system, in other words.
For the entire district?
For the entire district.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Yes, Rem. Rivera.
Madam President, on page 32, I just wanted to get more information on the contract with the college essay guy. I don't know if this is based on a number of high school students, because it says that it costs not to exceed 5,000. I was wondering if there was more information about that.
So that's actually going to be a professional development for our counselors. So he's going to train our counselors on how to write proper, you know, letters of recommendations, how to review students' essay work. So it really puts our students in the best possible position to get into competitive colleges.
So it says, take place on July 23rd and on September. So it's two days.
Correct.
And then there's a virtual workshop for high school students?
So, oh, yes, we extended the contract. Correct. We're going to open it up to all. The virtual one is for the high school students that they're going to be able to attend.
Okay. Thank you.
And will this be given to all of the district counselors or?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for tab seven? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, if you can add that to the agenda, please. Thank you. At this time, I am, we're on tab eight. I'm going to have our chairpersons read their reports for the month. And I'm reading the one, wrong one. I don't have in front of me. I'm going to start with Chairperson Maria Carvalho for the Plant and Property. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. On May 15th, President Bathalas, myself, Committee Member Eliana Chavez, Jerry Jacobs, Judge Malone, General Counsel Mr. Colagi, Mr. Kennedy, Business Administrator Superintendent Olga Hugelmeier, Rajiv Mahultra, Comptroller, Mr. Ben Candelino, and Director, our Director of Athletics. Now you remember. We have so many meetings, I'm trying to figure out which one this one was. All right, here we go. I also believe that Board Member Stanley Neron was in the meeting with me. The committee discussed the following items. The expansion of Williams Field, Field House, including budget and design. The reimbursement of Williams Field concession stands. Building and parking access at Dwyer Ninth Grade Academy. The kitchen access at EHS FJC Ninth Grade Academy. We spoke about the updates on the facade project at Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy and the main complex. We also spoke about custodial efficiency software. We were updated on a list of all summer projects and the status of HVAC projects under the ESIP program. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to have Eliana Chavez do the Special Education Committee. And Committee people, if you can just skip the attendees and just do the report, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. May 23rd, the Special Education Committee has the monthly meeting for the, for May. Our Board President, Shaleen Batos. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, members to the committee attending, including our Board President, and the following item what discuss. CPAD policy revision, graduation requirements for students with IP post-secondary transition programs. B annual roundtable with division of special services, extracurricular programs, including summer program and sport clinic personnel for summer program. Also, on June 6th, the committee has the monthly meeting for this month. And the members to the committee attending and the following item what discuss. Revision of the CPAD policy, parents workshop, including transition, B annual roundtable days for you, and summer program visitations. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to have, oh, oh, Madam Chair, for the Special Education, we have two meetings. Then, oh, you did well? Oh, thank you. At this time, I'm going to have our Chairperson for the Education Management Committee, Stephanie Pastana, do her report.
Thank you, Madam President. The Educational Management Committee met on June 5th at 4:00 PM. And we discussed the following. Proposed days for professional development on the 24-25 calendar. The committee discussed the parent input on the frequency of half-days on Mondays. We also discussed the possible modifications to the district's use of technology policy. And that concluded our meeting.
Thank you so much. And finally, I'm going to have our Chairperson, Jerry Jacobs, do the Finance and Accounting Committee report.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and the Committee met on June 26th. The meeting was attended by all. Board President, Chairperson, Commissioner Pastan, Goncalves Pastana.
No attendees. You need to save it.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Thank you. The committee discussed the renewal of property and casualty insurance package for the upcoming school year. Authorization to submit liquidation application for ARP. And the agenda preparation software of, for docs, for docs. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. At this, Mr. Kennedy, if you can add those, yes.
Go ahead. I'll add that to the agenda. Just going back to Commissioner Barbosa's question about Nardone, we have used them pretty fully since '21, '22 for our pizza products.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Okay. Tab nine, claims report. Any questions or comments for our claims report? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, if you can add that to the agenda. Tab 10, I want to recognize Columbia's Independence Day, which is sometime in July, July 10th. Gun Violence Awareness Month in July as well. And if there are any questions for anything from tab 10 to tab 10PP? Any questions or comments for anything from tab 10 to tab PP?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to acknowledge the tab 10B, Juneteenth Independence Day celebration. I want to thank the district for supporting Juneteenth Day and Juneteenth Independence Day and definitely helping to promote the festivities that happen throughout our community during the month of June for Juneteenth.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, if you can just add Juneteenth Independence Day on top of that? I didn't see that resolution.
It's tab 10B.
I know, but it's not on the top, like the other ones. It doesn't have a title. If you can just add a title.
Oh, okay. Understood.
That's why I missed it.
It doesn't have a header? It doesn't have a header?
Yes, a header, please. So add a title header on top of 10B. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for tab 10 to tab PP? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, if you can add them all to the agenda. We have a first reading for, I don't know which one goes first, they're both the same. A first reading for the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee for file code 1221 for the regulation. And we have another one for the policy. Do I have to read it?
No, if we have to let everyone know that those, the policy and regulation are available in the office of the School Business Administrator for review.
And will it also be available online?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, well, I just want to thank, I said a lot of thank you earlier. Just want to thank all the directors that are here today. I appreciate you being here. I appreciate you spending your Thursday evening with us. It doesn't go unnoticed. I know, you know, we changed a lot of things this year, but I just wanted to thank you for taking some time away from your family and being here to answer our questions during our board meeting. You're very appreciated. So thank you very much. Before I go into private, is there any comments from the board members? Okay, seeing none. The president requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act, specifically for the discussion of personnel matters, specifically interviews, personnel transfers, reorganization, job description, personnel report, suspension LG, administrative leave EL. Contractual matters, specifically 2024 to 2025, property and liability insurance, late liquidation application. Legal matters, litigation, specifically workers' compensation matters JR and AE. And transportation settlement discussion. The board will reconvene in public and take formal action. Mr. Kennedy, may I have, oh, no, I'm sorry. May I have a motion in a second, please?
I'm making motion to go into private session.
Second.
It's been moved in private second to go into private session. Roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs. Neron.
Yes.
Goncalves Pastana.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Bathalas.
Yes. Thank you to our audience as well, and God bless. Yes. Thank you to our audience as well and God bless.
May I have a motion to return tab 2A and 2B, oh, to add 2A and 2B to the agenda?
I make a motion to add tab 2A and 2B to the agenda.
I second.
Oh, and it's been moved in probably second to add tab 2A and 2B that was tabled back onto the agenda.
Roll call please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Ncalvis Pastana.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Bathless.
Yes. At this time, I would like to add tab 2C to the agenda with additional changes. Mr. Kennedy, can you let me know the additional for tab 2C, please?
Well, there's a few additional items that needed to be added, and I'll read them now.
Is that for tab 2C?
No. Tabs 2C as a whole is going to be added to the agenda, but there are other ones that we did too.
Oh, I was gonna go through, okay, go ahead.
Okay, the first one was appointment of principal, a resolution for school 16, Maria Gada. A resolution for appointment of principal of school 4, Jenka Fernandez. A resolution for termination of employment, LAG. A resolution for suspension with pay effective 5/23 EL. As you said before, personal report 2C. A resolution for 2024-2025 property and casualty insurance. A resolution to approval of ARP late liquidation settlement, I mean, late liquidation application, and a resolution for reorganization and personnel actions.
With a minus two, number six.
Correct, on 2C.
Okay. You've heard all of the items that have been added to the agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the entire agenda in its entirety?
I move the motion to approve the agenda in its entirety.
I second that motion.
It's been moved in probably second to approve the agenda in its entirety with the added items. Roll call please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Ncalvis Pastana.
Yes, with abstention on tab 5, page 2, and congratulations.
Rivera.
Yes, with an abstention on tab 5, page 2.
And Bathless.
I got it, thank you. Yes, with an abstention to tab 5, page 2. Congratulations to our two new principals, thank you. And we are at the end of June, so happy end of the year to all of our teachers, our staff, our administrators. Thank you for all that you've done throughout the year, we appreciate you and your efforts. Congratulations to our students moving on, don't forget about Elizabeth and continue to make Elizabeth proud, thank you and God bless. May I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I second the motion.
Is it moved in probably second to adjourn tonight's meeting at 11:06 PM? Roll call please.
Barbosa.
Yes, good night, congratulations.
Jacobs.
Yes, good night.
Ncalvis Pastana.
Yes, good night.
Rivera.
Yes.
Bathless.
Yes, thank you, have a great night, God bless.